Good morning. I am going to call to order both the regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole and the inaugural meeting of the Race Equity Subcommittee for Wednesday, April 25th. My name is Andrea Jenkins and I am the Chair of both of these committees. And with me at the dais today is Councilmember Ellison, Worsami, Schrader, Council President Bender, Councilmember Gordon, and Councilmember Fletcher. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum of the City Council. Today is a very exciting day. We are taking the next step in moving forward the race equity work that was initiated on the last council and really heavily supported and moved forward by my predecessor, Council Vice President Elizabeth Glidden. And so I want to acknowledge her efforts and we're moving this work forward. So, thank you all for being here. And before we get started with our presentations to learn about the work that has been happening here at the city of Minneapolis, the ordinances that created it, as well as what our future plans are, I want to share a poem with you. I think I threatened Councilmember Ellison the other day that I would do this at council meetings and so I'm now going to move forward with that threat. It's a poem that many of you in this room probably experienced at some point in time. I certainly experienced it many days. And hopefully we will have many, many more days like this. It's a poem called "Black Day." She is dangerously happy. The day is beautiful. There's never been a better time or place to be alive, she thinks. There is no life more perfect than her own, and she is right. Yesterday was a black day, not as in dark matter or consumer spending black riding. Though some may call City Hall a black hole, I wake up every day and go to this black hole. I have to protect my soul. But this wasn't that day. No dark clouds blocking out the sun. This was a black day, as in black people's issues were front and center. As in a time to make systemic change happen for those disabused by white supremacy. As in a city trying to make amends for the sins of its fathers by creating a racial equity As in a black president coming to town to shake hands with the common folks. As in Professor John Powell riding in on his black horse seeking reparations for the black homeowners who lost their fortunes. A black day as in the first black director for the Community Planning and Economic Development Agency was nominated by the mayor. A black day as in the Prince Hall masons were negotiating building affordable senior housing in the community. Black days don't occur very often in City Hall, sometimes not at all. But as the president says, it's easy to be cynical, but hope is better. Stay hopeful. Thank you. And, um, thank you very much. So with that, I want to acknowledge that we have been joined by Councilmembers Kano, Cunningham, and Palmasano, and Goodman. And so I am going to begin... So the way our presentation will flow today is that we will have presentations from our staff member Joy Marsh Stevens interspersed with presentations from community members, including Dr. Rose Brewer, Leslie Badoo, the President of the NAACP, and Jeff Hassan from the African American Leadership Forum. We have two items on our Race Equity Subcommittee agenda today. The first is to receive and file several presentations. Joy Marsh Stevens from the City's Division of Race and Equity will brief us on the past, present, and future efforts around racial equity efforts within the city enterprise. And then interspersed with those presentations, I have invited, again, three community racial justice leaders and historians to speak to us today about the history of racial harm in Minneapolis, the current landscape of racial inequity, and the future of racial justice. These presentations will be focused on the city as a whole and provide some context around our enterprise efforts. So we will start with a presentation from Dr. Rose Brewer. Dr. Brewer is going to talk to us a little bit about the history of racial harm in Minneapolis. Welcome, Dr. Brewer.
Thank you, Chairperson Jenkins, and to the council. Thank you for inviting me. I don't have a whole lot of time, so I'm going to get right into it. As you all know, in this 21st century, racial inequality is real. It's deep, and it's alive and well, whether we're talking about environmental racism, mass incarceration, the racial wealth divide, which is something that I've written quite a bit about. I think it's important to think about income, but I also want to put on your mind the history of wealth in this country. And wealth is actually what you own minus what you owe, your assets. And the story of the black racial wealth divide historically is, of course, the trauma of violence, the blood of enslavement, labor expropriation. And the reason this is so meaningful is because wealth is passed on intergenerationally. And if you aren't able to obtain it at an earlier point in time, your heirs, your descendants, won't have it at a later point in time. It really is disingenuous to talk about poverty without understanding how wealth was developed in this country and continues to be expropriated. And for African Americans, the wealth divide has been exceedingly huge and devastating. In 2011, which is not the most recent statistic, but relevant because it followed in the wake of the housing crash and the economic depression or recession of '07 and '08, just about $5,000 in holdings was the black median wealth income as compared to $114,000 for white Americans. This pattern followed in states like Minnesota, as well as nationally. And unfortunately, the situation has not improved. Of course, in our city and in this state, the most, I should say, devastating consequences of lack of homeownership, which is very low in the city, is the lack of wealth production. Homes are typically the way that people build wealth, and at 21%, it's very difficult for African Americans to do that. However, there is a deeper history that Councilperson Jenkins asked me to speak to you about very briefly. And, you know, I thought about this and I wondered, how do we tell the history of a state where structural racism organizes life systemically and a belief by the dominant group that its racial politics are liberal and exceptional? It's a very interesting conundrum in some ways. We know if we go back to the earliest history, as in the rest of the country, it's a history of white settler colonialism, the removal of the Dakota in this state. And of course, from my perspective, the current so-called racial disparities are embedded in everyday life, but also in this deeper history that continues to haunt us. Just to highlight a few of the aspects of that history as we go through this morning, some of you may know that by 1863, there were steamboats called the Northerner and the Davenport that brought over 200 enslaved Africans to Minnesota to work in a labor shortage caused by the Civil War. Minnesota can't disconnect its history from slavery or the Civil War, no matter how hard we try. Slaveholders had summered in St. Cloud, Minnesota. They brought enslaved Africans with them. The University of Minnesota actually made a small loan from a slaveholder to keep its doors open. The small but growing population of black people in the wake of the post-slave period is notable. Churches were built, communities were raised, but the state didn't respond favorably. So there's a long arc of discrimination that didn't start today, but was pervasive. And I would say it boils down to this: White employers simply refused to hire Minnesotans who were African American. They refused to lend. The few jobs historically open were primarily either unskilled, service, or on railroads. Racial violence solidified the exclusion, the economic exclusion. We know the story of Duluth, but in 1931, in my neighborhood, violence arose when Arthur Lee attempted to move to South Minneapolis, being the first black homeowner there. This is a small piece of the history that haunts us to the present time. So it is imperative that we hold this history dear, that we be held accountable, and that we properly locate the economic disparities and exclusions of today. We recently did a very moving presentation on the University of Minnesota campus called Campus Divided, and it spoke to that university's history of exclusion, including African American students not being able to live in dorms. So we have our work cut out. Glad I was able to share about five minutes of a very deeper and more complex history. So thank you.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Brewer, for that rich and enlightening and insightful, brief history of the challenges that we face in our state and here in the city of Minneapolis. And so I'm going to invite Ms. Marsh Stevens to the podium at this point to give some context on the city enterprise's past efforts around race equity.
Thank you, Chair Jenkins, and for other committee members. I will not presume to be the historian that Dr. Brewer is, but I will, to your point, speak to some of the efforts that the city has undertaken in order to speak to the economic disparities and some of the challenges that are faced by communities of color in Minnesota over time. But before I do that, I want to take a moment to introduce my team, who's here with me today. So the work of the Division of Race and Equity really centers on two different buckets of work. It's work that we do inside of our city enterprise to work with policymakers and with staff to grow capacity to advance racial equity and to think about racial equity critically in the work that we do. And so representing that body of work on the team is Larice Reed, who's here with us today. In addition to that, the Division of Race and Equity runs a federally funded grant program that looks at racial trauma and harm in community through systemic racism over time. It grows capacity of community members and city staff to both understand the trauma and the basis of that trauma, but also infuses resources to help us build more resilient and trauma-responsive organizations as the city of Minneapolis, but also grow capacity of our residents in order to be able to lead in creating resilience-based solutions. And so Ebony Adidio and Christina Manichero-Villagron are on the team, and they're also here today.
Can we ask your staff to just stand up so they can be recognized?
Please do. Stand up. That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So in addition to that team, since we have... Our team is pretty small, it's really dedicated to this work. In 2017, we started a program modeled after an effort by the Metropolitan Council to expand the reach and the impact of our work. The team that we have as our Race Equity Coordinator team is represented by 12 city depart... Or 10 city departments, 12 members who dedicate 10% of their time to helping us tackle enterprise-level racial equity matters. And so they've been able to do things like help inform the comprehensive plan and that rollout. They participated with us in some training opportunities at the Community Connections Conference. They've also been able to provide input to HR as a ruling out the cultural agility success factor. And some of those members are also here today, but I just want to identify them. As I said, they represent 10 of our city departments. CPED, Amanda Chavez-Tow, and Sylvia Gonzalez. Emergency Management has Diana Roman. The Health Department has Marquita Keys, who I thought stepped in, who's here in the room. Finance and Property Services has Kurt Fernandez. The Clerks Department from the Mayor's Office, Jen White, is part of this group. NCR has Michelle Chavez. Public Works has Greg Michaels and Byron Perkins. The City Attorney's Office has Pauline Bradford. Regulatory Services has Daryl Spears, who's also in the room. NIT has Gregory Ball. I'd like to acknowledge them because our ability to do the work that we do would be impossible without the assistance of this team and the participation of departments who have allowed them to join with us. So back to the history of the work, again emphasizing that I'm not a historian, but I do want to lift up some of the key points, some of the key opportunities that our city council has taken over the years to really center racial equity and really address the racial harm that has come through centuries in history of policy, of government policy. So starting back to the time of Hubert Humphrey was really when the city of Minneapolis put itself on the map through the adoption of the Fair Employment Practices ordinance and the resulting Fair Employment Practices Commission. The city really began to talk about employment. So as you talk about those economic factors that Dr. Brewer spoke of, really looking at employment and looking at employment disparity that impacted Native Americans, African Americans, and the Jewish community at the time. So by centering this work around this ordinance, it was Humphrey's opportunity to say, we as the city of Minneapolis are going to think more critically about how we expand opportunity to these communities that have been left out. Fast-forwarding from that work, we look to 1964 with the election of Mayor Napdalen, who also came in looking again at economic disparities, looking at employment, and thinking about how we can continue to expand opportunities for many of the same communities who are being left out. So the work, as Dr. Brewer spoke to, has been going on for quite a while, even within the '40s and '50s. In the '40s or the '60s, going on for quite a while as well because the issues still continued to present themselves. Minneapolis at the time, demographically, had a very small population of African Americans, a very small population of communities of color, yet at the same time, still considered itself to be relatively progressive on these issues, but the disparities still existed. So these policies were enacted. And Minneapolis, like other cities nationally, in 1966 and 1967, got onto the map as well when we saw racial uprisings. So we saw communities across our nation really showing up with communities, saying that they had had enough. They were looking for more access to opportunities, and they were looking for government to show up in that way. So for Minneapolis, the resulting of that was the formation of our Civil Rights Department and the Civil Rights Commission that came in 1967. If we look into the 21st century more recently, starting in 2008, the City Council also began looking at employment again, so continuing to keep these issues again centered in the work we're doing by forming the Employment Steering Committee and passing a resolution on equity and employment for the city of Minneapolis following in 2012. In 2014, we joined with other cities nationally who were looking at advancing racial equity through the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. The city of Minneapolis was one of nine cities across the nation who joined that group in its inception and said, we're going to work with others to think about how we're going to expand racial equity in the work that we do through policy. So beginning to form a community of practice around this work. Shortly thereafter, the city hired two Equity and Inclusion Managers. I'm one of them. My counterpart, Julianne Leerson, who leads the Promise Zone in North Minneapolis, is the second one. The City Council formed a definition of racial equity to guide the work for the city and also began, as I mentioned before, the Race Equity Coordinator launch in 2007, which leads us up to the adoption of the 2017... Sorry. Which leads us up to the adoption of the Race Equity Ordinance also in 2017. Up until this point, the city of Minneapolis had not implemented really the capacity-building infrastructure in the city around this work. We had operated without a solid plan that guided the work, a racial equity plan that guides the work of the city. We had not begun to implement actionable tools and putting them in the hands of our staff and our departments to be able to think critically around race. A lot of the work was led by policymakers and a few very high-level staff in the city who were helping to think about policy, but not actually embedding the capacity deep down into departments so that we could really make the thinking about racial equity as part of our everyday work. And so the adoption of the ordinance really began that opportunity for us to think critically about that. In addition to that, what it allows us to do is think about how we can create more accountability measures associated with that. So clear performance measures internally, ways to share this information externally to our community members and for community members to join with us in co-creating more equitable outcomes in our city, which is part of the reason why we had... Why the council formed the Race Equity Community Advisory Committee, which we'll hear more about later on in the presentation. So to remind folks, we do, as I said, City Council did form a definition of racial equity, which is available on our website. And one of the things that I'd like to just call out about this, back to what Dr. Brewer spoke of, is that we recognize that our commitment to racial equity does require us to think about reversing the harms that have been done by government policy. We can't just take a futuristic look at what we need to do, but we actually need to be thoughtful about our history and about how our history informs where we are today. So on the grand scale of where we are as a city, based on the policy works that we've done so far, I really feel like the city of Minneapolis is in this sort of middle tier around organizing. We've done a lot of work, and this logic model comes from the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. And it says, and based on the logic model, what it says is that we, as a city, we have really begun doing some critical work around racial equity, but a lot of that stays relatively siloed inside of our departments. There are some cross-department collaboration efforts that are happening, but generally some of the key work that we need to be doing around defining again that plan that the Race Equity Ordinance calls for, the tool utilization that the ordinance calls for, that's really our next step. And so our next step in this work is how we can begin to build that capacity. And so the policy work that we've done thus far, the ordinances and the resolutions that have come from City Council have gotten us to the point that we're at, and we really do sit at the precipice of being able to move that work forward in a much more powerful way. So I agree with you, Council Vice President Jenkins, that there really is no better time to be alive than we are right now. I already spoke to this, so I'm going to skip past that, and then I think we're ready for our next speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Marsh Stevens. So there is a history. Before I move forward though, I do want to just acknowledge that Councilmember Andrew Johnson is not able to join us today. He is representing the city of Minneapolis on a transportation project with the state, so I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge his absence. And with that, I am going to invite Mr. Jeffrey Hassan Esquire of the African American Leadership Council to forum, I think it is, I'm sorry, to give us some comments about the present and current landscape of racial inequities in Minneapolis.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins and City Councilmembers. My name is Jeffrey Hassan. I am now a consultant to the African American Leadership Forum, having just retired on April 1st of this year. But I will be continuing this work that we're doing until the new executive director is in place. Want to start from the specific and then work out to the general. The African American Leadership Forum was formed in 2008 by a group of roughly 45 African American leaders in the corporate, government, political, and private sectors to address three issues: economics, education, and health and wellness in the African American community in the metro area. Now, because most of the people at the table at that time had had the opportunity for an advanced education, most of us coalesced around the issue of education. And so the African American Leadership Forum and education almost became synonymous. Did a lot of work in the legislature over the years, issued a publication in 2011 called "Crisis in Our Community" that put forward the five gaps of educational achievement in the Twin Cities community. In 2015, a group of us was at the Congressional Black Caucus in Washington, DC, including Senator Jeff Hayden from the state of Minnesota, in which the U.S. Census data was released in Star Tribune and the Pioneer Press, showing that between 2014, 2015, African Americans in Minnesota were the only ethnic group to experience a decline in median family income year over year. That got my attention for sure as a Director of the Leadership Forum, and was a wake-up call for us, at least for me personally and many of us, that we had kind of been asleep at the switch, not really recognizing the economic condition of African Americans in Minnesota, and more specifically here in the metro area. And so in late 2015, Stephen Belton, Executive Director, CEO of Minneapolis Urban League and I drafted what became to be known as the ALF, African American Leadership Forum, Five Point Plan to End Economic Inequality. And over the next year, 2016, he and I met with a number of public, private, and philanthropic leaders to talk about that five-point plan. Quickly, the five-point plan was around employment equity, business opportunities, legislative action, philanthropic investment, and finally, the fifth point was an annual report to discuss the progress that had been made, or to document the progress that had been made. In 2016, after a meeting with public, private, and philanthropic representatives, we found that progress was being made in the area of employment. We saw an uptick in employment. 2016, the Minnesota Legislature passed an equity package for the first time, $70 million over the biennium. We saw an increase in philanthropic investment. The one area in which we saw no progress, that was completely stagnant, was in the area of business opportunities. And so over the next year, 2016, 2017, we began going to government entities and asking them, tell us how much you're spending each year in contracting and purchasing of goods and services. And they could tell us what the aggregate amount was. They could even tell us what the WMBE amount was, Women and Minority Business Enterprise. Our response was, well, we're the African American Leadership Forum. How much are you spending with African Americans? Well, we can't tell you that. Our systems don't allow that. In 2016, there was only two units, State of Minnesota and University of Minnesota, that could tell us how much was being spent with African Americans and other ethnic businesses. Long story short, by last year, we now had seven entities, including the city of Minneapolis, State of Minnesota, University of Minnesota, the two cities, Hennepin County, Metropolitan Council, and Metropolitan Airport Commission, that could tell us how much they were spending with each of the ethnic breakout categories. And the story was not a good one. And you need to know, the city of Minneapolis, along with all of those seven other entities, were spending less than one-half of 1% of their government spending in contracting and procuring goods and services with African American businesses. Same thing with Native American businesses, less than one-half of 1% of the dollars. Now, some of you I've met with since then, Councilmember Jenkins and some of the others of you, to put forth this information in front of you, and the question is, well, what do you want us to do? We want you to hold government employees, your city employees specifically, accountable. Make their jobs accountable for changing this terrible situation we have. Now, many people have asked, well, how did the situation get this bad? I believe that it got this bad because it's basically flown under the radar. You know, who really knows how much the city or the state or whomever is actually purchasing goods and services from? And so it's been out of sight and consequently out of mind. So that's the city of Minneapolis. Couple pieces of information, if you really are interested and want to drill down on these issues, there's two. issues, there's two pieces of information that I would call the Bible when you're talking about disaggregated data, when it comes to the economic conditions of not only African-Americans but ethnic groups in Minnesota. One is the economic status of Minnesotans that's produced by the Minnesota State Demographic Center. This is a January 2016 publication, excellent. It breaks out 17 different ethnic categories and describes their educational, their family, their economic condition. It's a must-read if you're really interested in addressing this issue. The other is our organization, African-American Leadership Forum, and I do have some copies here, excuse me, for you, published in December of 2015, The African-American Financial Capabilities, that describes the condition, the economic condition of African-Americans in, here in Minnesota and primarily in the metro area. I'm happy to make this publication available either electronically or in hard copy to all the council members. So, with that, I will end. If there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hassan? I do want to ask Mr. Hassan that you provide a copy of those reports that you refer to, to the city clerk, so that we can have them for the public record. And I want to thank you so much for your biting presentation.
Was it biting?
It was, it was to me.
All right. Thank you.
And deeply appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
So, now, we will continue with our city's presentation, and I want to invite Ms. Mar Stevens back to the podium to continue with her presentation.
So, our, the city of Minneapolis, our racial equity efforts, as I referenced earlier, they're very widely distributed. So, the ingenuity and the passion around what we're going to do around racial equity really does sit in the hands of our nearly 40,000 employees and our over 20 departments, where ideas and initiatives around the work are broadly shared. So, an effort to present that work takes a lot of energy, and I want to definitely commend those department heads who rallied to provide updates to us in preparation for this presentation, recognizing that we have limited time and there's no really, really effective way to tell this comprehensive story in the limited time that we have. But I will make every effort to touch on the highlights from these department narratives that we have and the stories of what's happening inside of the city right now, to Mr. Hassan's points around the economic opportunities that exist for us here in the city of Minneapolis. A lot of the work, as you will see, centers around how we are responding to those challenges as a city. And the presentation that I'll offer looks both internally, what's the work that we're doing for ourselves, how are we thinking about our employment, how are we thinking about our spending, how are we thinking about the ways in which we're engaging powerfully with our community members? And then also, what's the work that we're doing to actually impact directly those constituents who call Minneapolis home? So, as we look at our enterprise racial equity efforts, we segmented the work into four basic categories. How are we growing the capacity of our staff to think critically around racial equity? How are we building teams inside of our departments, the tools that we're utilizing in order to further this work? The workforce, who are we hiring? How are we looking at our workforce and developing people within our workforce for promotional opportunities and leveraging people for advancement, as well as the ways in which we're bringing people into the workforce? And the spending, to Mr. Hassan's point, how are we spending our dollars and being intentional about spending these dollars in ways that actually grow the wealth opportunities for the communities of color? And I also want to offer that the Division of Race and Equity doesn't own all of these streams of work. This work is broadly owned by a lot of other areas in the city, and I'll do my best to highlight that ownership as we get to those different sections. So, around capacity building, I'll start with the work that we do do, and I'm, and just so that everyone knows, one, there are copies of the presentation that are on the dais next to the clerk. There are also copies of the presentation that are linked to the, to the online that are available to folks, so I'm not going to read slides to you, but just so that this information is available for everyone to download and to consume. So, what's listed here are the variety of ways in which the Division of Race and Equity, which is a component of our city coordinator's office, has provided enterprise-level engagement for staff. That work is centered around foundational racial equity training, where we've been able to touch every single city department. We've been able to graduate 60 staff people through that process as well, who've completed all five of those classes, and that's happened over the course of the last couple of years. We've led a book club, an enterprise-level book club. We've done other sorts of engagements. We've provided, in addition to that, training opportunities around racial trauma and harm for community members, so that we, as city staff, understand more deeply how racial harm and systemic racism has impacted the communities that we serve, which helps us to be more informed as we go out and engage with these communities. In addition to that, we've had opportunities to partner with other departments and with other efforts in the city, like our Minneapolis Black Employee Network, to bring some opportunities to the city with our mayor's office and with other departments as well, like Neighborhood and Community Relations. We're really excited. The picture that you saw of the "Our Efforts" slide is a more recent engagement that we've been doing through our Creative City Making Program in the Arts, Culture, and Creative Economy Department, where we've been working with a group of Latino community members and city staff to capture their stories, to understand how their immigration experience has been, have, how they've been traumatized and experienced their migration to the, to the city of Minneapolis, what their lives look like here in the city of Minneapolis as a result of being here, some of them undocumented. The, the stories that came from that are being put into a mural that soon and very soon is going to be hanging on the wall right across from 315, so really brightening city hall and really becoming an opportunity for us to reflect on our walls, the people who call Minneapolis home. So, very excited about that as well. In addition to the capacity-building work that Race and Equity does, our Human Resources Department takes a very strong leadership role in this work as well, in really growing the, the capacity of our supervisors and our managers and other department heads to really think about how they are able to look at the workforce and mature the workforce in a way that is informed by racial equity, by cultural competency as well. And so, they have a variety of different programs that speak to that. The Leadership You program is broadly supported through different departments. They also support tools like our intercultural development inventory, which is a part of Leadership You, but it's also been used in other departments as well, so that departments and staff are able to understand where they fall individually on a spectrum of their cultural competency and being able to have tools that allow them to grow and to mature as a result of that. In addition to that, our Human Resources is more, currently coming out with a success factor around, I'm going to say cultural competence, but I know that that's not right, and patience in the back of the room, she can whisper it to me, hopefully. Okay, thank you. And so, that's coming out in the next, in 2019, as a way for city staff individually to be able to measure their own progress and for us to be able to support one another as we grow and mature. In addition to that, our Neighborhood and Community Relations Department does a lot of really great work, helping to provide language access support to staff in a variety of different ways, of its interpretation or translation services, as well as providing a variety of different venues for staff to deepen their relationships and build their own connections with communities of color and Native American communities. Our Intergovernmental Relations Department as well does capacity support around grant-making, and so, supporting departments who are looking at exploring new opportunities around racial equity, helping them, helping to support them through grant funding. In addition to the capacity building, is our team and tool work. So, where are departments actually building teams and beginning to deepen their, their infrastructure inside their department to think about race critically and the tools that they're, that they are using? As we look at different jurisdictions who are either part of that Government Alliance on Race and Equity network or other cities nationally, building those teams inside of departments helps to deepen that capacity and move cities from doing that operational or that, that organizing work and really beginning to build those sustainable models. So, building teams inside of departments is a key strategy that we in Race and Equity hope to begin to implement citywide. But I want to lift up those departments who have taken some initiative around doing this already. Some of these teams existed before Race and Equity existed, and all of these teams exist for a variety of different ways. Our Civil Rights Department has a specific division around, around equity. Our Finance and Property Services Department actually built a Race and Equity team that's looking really critically at policy, that's looking at inclusion, that's looking at hiring and on spending. Our Regulatory Services Department is relative, is fairly similar in that regard as well, really taking a critical look at the ways in which their department is functioning, but also adding to that the capacity building for their staff. 311 does a lot of really innovative work around workplace inclusion, so how can they deepen the understanding of their call operators, understand different cultures? The Health Department has their culture club, and they bring in speakers. They also do a lot of inclusion work through their, through their efforts as well. And additionally, the Community Planning and Economic Development Division has an inclusion team there as well. And the inclusion team that they formed came out as, as a result of an all-employee survey that they did in learning that this was an area of opportunity for them. So, they formed this team, they brought in different training through a relationship with the, with the Office of Equity and diversity at the, at the University of Minnesota, and they hosted a 10-part training series for CPED staff as well as for others in the And lastly, our workforce. I definitely want to lift up the work that our Human Resources Department leads in this, along with other departments like Civil Rights and CPED, job training or employment and training, in helping to grow our workforce to the point that it reflects the city of Minneapolis and the diversity. The City Council actually set goals last year around our workforce diversity, that we were going to get to 41% employees of color and 45% women in the workplace by two, by the year 2022. We have a lot of work to do to get there from where we are right now, and these slides are here to reflect, again, the diversity of work that's happening across our city enterprise. So, we have efforts on here for people who have thought about their interview panels, making sure that their interview panels are reflective of a variety of different perspectives, investments made, and addressing bias. And then doing training through, training that's been offered through HR. There are lots of opportunities here listed around different recruitment opportunities that departments are doing, as well as pathway programs. What we're finding is that the government is certainly a great way for people to come into the workplace, particularly for people of color, to come into the workplace, but really building, building these pathway programs to make working for local government exciting for high school students or for college students. And so, the pathway programs really do provide a bridge, and there are a variety of different pathway programs that are reflected here in a lot of departments, like Drug Services, HR, 911, Fire Department, the Police Department, Public Works, as ways to grow our population of our workforce. In addition to that, there are ways in which departments are doing outreach in the different areas to recruit even younger people into the workplace as well. We have our Clerk's Office, who creates opportunities for students of color, for example, to be election judges, and that allows them also, in many opportunities, to bring additional language skills into those, election, into those polling places. In addition to our workforce plate, efforts that are happening, speaking directly to Mr. Hassan's presentation, is our spending and how our city is spending our dollars. He's let us know where those numbers stack up right now and the opportunity that we have. Some of the understanding about this and the work that we've done is the work we've done around supplier diversity. This effort has been shepherded through our city coordinator's office, through a cross-departmental working group, who's been thinking about the spend that we have as a city and the opportunities for us to expand our spending and the capacity of staff to be able to make more informed decisions as they're allocating their discretionary dollars. And when I say discretionary dollars, we're certainly, certainly spending that we have the opportunity to actually make decisions on. We have the, the opportunity to go out and seek specific vendors, which is about $1 billion, which is sourceable spending, where you have the opportunity to go out and find different vendors, which is not a small amount of money between 2013 and 2016. You'll find online that there's a spend diversity dashboard, it's on our city's website. You have the ability to go in there and see at the enterprise level what our spend looks like in a variety of different categories, and you also have the opportunity to drill down to a specific department for a specific period of time and find out what that department has been doing around their spend diversity. Additional work continues through the supplier diversity efforts to expand opportunities for businesses to do education for businesses around how to plug into the workplace. They've actually more recently released a small business portal, which is, which will come up a little bit later in the presentation, but I offer this up to say that a lot of work has been happening and work is, continues to happen. In addition to that, our Civil Rights Department has a long history with their Contract Compliance Division of ensuring that we have women and minorities who are represented in, in capital contracts with the city. And lastly, this year, our Budget Office has introduced a new equity assessment in our budget process, where those of us who are submitting budget requests have the opportunity and the expectation that we're thinking about our budget request and asking, answering critical questions around how that ask is going to help the city further its racial equity goals. So, the last section in here is around those external racial equity efforts. Again, it's a broad pool of work that's happening here for the, for ease. We've segmented this into three broad categories. What are we doing around economic inclusion, which can be anything from housing or from jobs? We've looked at community health and safety, and as well, engagement and collaborative decision-making opportunities. So, around economic inclusion, certainly there's the work that CPED has been doing. CPED has their homeownership strategies that are expanding access to homeownership for those that have historically been locked out due to past discriminatory policies and practices. There's a variety of home programs that, that CPED is leading in that regard. In addition to that, they are expanding their outreach to different contractor, developer partners, and encouraging smaller women and minority-owned businesses to participate. So, there's some data there that speaks to their numbers in that specific regard. And then lastly, CPED is expanding access to healthy food options in areas with low access to healthy food. So, they, they speak specifically to the Worth Co-op that opened in 2017 and the transition of many community lots into community gardens. In addition to CPED, our city coordinator's office took a leadership role with the minimum wage and Earn, Sick, and Safe Time Ordinance, and as well, the Small Business Team, and there should be the Small Business Portal, which got moved down to the Innovation Team section, but that work has stemmed out of the city coordinator's office. In addition to that, the Innovation Team, which is a Bloomberg Philanthropies-funded program in the coordinator's office, has taken leadership around helping minority and immigrant-owned businesses by providing support to them and helping to bridge some of the, the access for them into city, into the city, so helping deepen their understanding of how to get plugged in to city-run programs and to benefit from the work that we're doing, but also to inform some of the work that we are doing. So, how do we take this information from those who are, who are consumers of our services and help to shape the work that we're doing internally? Secondarily, the rental housing work that the Innovation Team has done in collaboration with other city departments like Regulatory Services, has really helped to trans, to transform the ways in which we are doing tiering for rental housing, holding landlords accountable, but then also supporting our tenants in the process. The Civil Rights Department is doing work around understanding women and minority-owned businesses and the opportunities that we have inside the city marketplace. Our Assessor's Office has, over the course of the last, the last few years, really been looking at both the tax relief program, but also looking at their home valuations and helping to make sure that those community members who often are not native English speakers and who may be more hesitant to engage with city government, understand the process of being able to contest their housing valuations if they, if they need to do so. And then lastly, our Environmental Health Department does a lot of one-on-one work with licensed businesses, particularly those that are owned by immigrants, and helping to provide support to them in their language of preference. Going in the wrong direction. Let's get that to the forward. Community health and safety is a pretty broad bucket of work, so I'm going to speak pretty highly to the work that's happening here. A lot of what you'll see here are both policy moves that are happening. There are engagement opportunities that are happening around, for instance, like the Civil Rights Hate Crime Hotline. There are ways in which departments like Emergency Management and Fire Department are providing education to community members around their own safety. The Health Department has a variety of different programs around group violence intervention and healthy living initiatives, as well as the food, lodging, and pools partnerships that are meant to expand opportunity and grow the health of our different communities in Minneapolis. Our Police Department is in the process of rolling out a set of community stakeholders and community partners who are going to be people coming from community to deepen our ability to provide community-based policing with, with different, with different community members, as well as, the Police Activities League is another program that the Police Department has run for quite some time, that has engaged residents and youth from across our city, particularly from communities of color and from Little Earth. The civ, the city attorney's office has been doing a lot of work around looking at legislation and different policy moves to, to address disparities in our justice system. And then lastly, engagement and collaborative decision-making. This is another really big bucket, and these are probably, I hopefully, these are not overly artificial buckets to put this work in. Like I said, that there's a lot of work that's happening across 4,000 people in 20-plus departments. But the engagement and collaborative decision-making bucket is meant to reflect the ways in which we are doing intentional engagement in communities of color, but it's also meant to showcase the times and opportunities when we're creating tables, to invite our residents to actually have a voice in shaping the policies and the practices that are defining our work. So, in, in the Division of Race and Equity, the Recast Minneapolis program that I mentioned before, it is a federally funded grant program that is really centered around, center, and placing community in the placing community in the decision-making process around shaping how we actually spend these dollars. And part of the tools that we're using to do that is doing some training and healing for community members. We're also doing some youth development work, went through Recast and in the process of rolling out a Critical Incident Response Protocol in partnership with residents and with city staff so that we can better understand how we show up for one another when bad things happen. And in the process of that, identifying community-based solutions that community will have the opportunity to vote on and to say that they want to fund. The City Clerk's Department has been, as I referenced earlier, doing some outreach over the last few years and reaching out to more diverse community members to participate in the election process, both on the staff standpoints that we have more and more people of color who are showing up at the polls and making the civic engagement process more accessible. Our Communications Department works really closely with Neighborhood and Community Relations to expand our communication opportunities and making, making them more accessible in different languages and through different media opportunities to, to make sure that what we are doing in the city is shared as broadly as it can be across our city enterprise. And then our Sustainability Team has done some really pioneering work around the Green Zones and their Homegrown Minneapolis, and their Homegrown Minneapolis Initiatives as well to deepen our footprint and our sustainability work in, in communities in Minneapolis. And then lastly, our Neighborhood and Community Relation, Community Relations Department, as I mentioned before, does a lot of community-based or citywide-based capacity building for city staff and helping us plug into different communities. And part of the value that they bring to the table is they're also able to help us engage directly. If it's about moving out a new policy initiative, it's about training or the conference that they do every single year with the Community Connections Conference. Their role is really about helping to make sure that our city processes are informed by different communities that we serve and that we're growing our capacity to work with these communities directly. Public Works is a department has been doing significant outreach around recycling and organics. And again, lots of different opportunities that are listed here. I will lift up the work of the Promise Zone in particular, not just because Julie and I are work wives, but, but Julie is doing some really forward-thinking work in North Minneapolis and engaging community members so that we can make the city of Minneapolis both accessible and transparent to the residents that we serve. That's it.
Wow. Thank you, Ms. Mar Stevens. Are there any questions? Are there any questions for Ms. Mar Stevens? You know, I do want to just acknowledge that this, this work is, while much of our presentation has really focused primarily on, on African Americans, this work is much, much broader. And until that end, in 2016, the city of Minneapolis established the Transgender Advisory Committee, which also works on, on equity issues. And that, that group is being sort of led by Councilmember Cunningham. We also have an internal transgender equity committee work group, which I chair. The city has established the Office of Immigration and Immigrant Rights. And we are in the process of hiring a director for that office and, and my staff. Sarah Lopez has been really deeply engaged in the interviewing for that particular position. So the, the work is, is much broader and, and really focuses on trying to create equity for everyone here in the city of Minneapolis, but recognizing that some, some communities are, are much more deeply marginalized than others. So with that, I want to invite to the podium Ms. Leslie Badu of the NAACP, the President of the NAACP. And she's gonna talk to us a little bit about the future of racial justice in the city of Minneapolis. Welcome, Ms. Badu.
Thank you. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and over again, yet still expecting different results. Grace and peace, everyone. My name is Leslie Badu and I have the honor of serving as the President for the Minneapolis NAACP. I am very excited to be here with you all today. Why I started with the definition of insanity is because I'm here today hoping that we can radically think different so we can then inform, do different, because that's the only way that we are going to be able to help Minnesota grow in a way where it is equitable, it is healthy, our education levels, our wealth, wealth levels will grow for all citizens of Minnesota. Today, I want to present three areas that the NAACP has been focusing on, and I think that it may help to inform the work that you all are doing. First, transforming the way that we think about criminal justice. Second, economic development. And third, educational opportunities. First, when we think about transforming the way that we think about criminal justice, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. Black people are not criminals. Our communities have been criminalized. Whether we're thinking about the war on drugs, whether we're thinking about the Lordering and lurking law or ordinance that you all actually did repeal, so good job, City Council, or whether we're thinking about systems like our education system where in Minnesota, a black little girl is 8.5 times more likely to be suspended than her white female counterpart. When we think about criminal justice, we have to think about what are some new incentives that we can do to change? The Minneapolis NAACP has a warrant forgiveness day that we did in Hennepin County last year, and we were able to forgive 250 warrants. We're working with Ramsey County in May, May the 12th, to do it again. In addition to warrants, we're going to also be helping people to reinstate their license. Why this is important is because we have to reimagine how we look at communities of African descent. When I came to Minnesota, I didn't know anything about North Minneapolis until I volunteered at the Urban League's Family Day. And that was a year after my arrival here to attend law school. This was very disheartening. When I finally found out about the North Minneapolis community, it was all negative. Now, I'm from the inner city of DC, which looks vastly different than the North Minneapolis community, and that's a compliment. North Minneapolis was nothing like what I heard. I didn't hear gunshots all the time like it's projected. I did recognize that there was opportunity for growth, but if we are putting communities in fear of even stepping foot in a community, how do we possibly expect for people to see these individuals as human beings? Last summer, I was pleasantly surprised when I attended a meeting that was actually by members of the city council, or actually it was the city of Minneapolis. It was a strategic analysis of West Broadway in a Snapchat. The number one reason for arrest on West Broadway was very surprising to me. It was actually being arrested because of lack of identification and being able to provide it. This came from the city of Minneapolis. Public data isn't always rapidly available to everyone. And when I saw that there was 181 arrests for not having a driver's license, I wondered why haven't we found a solution? Why haven't we worked together? I'm in law school, so I sat down with some judges and we talked about it as well. I am confident that if the city makes this a priority, we can move forward and we can actually find solutions so that we don't have people of African descent just being arrested just because a lot of it is a symptom of poverty. Even when you go and look at some of the other lower level offenses, it's not innately that they are criminal activities, it's because people cannot afford a lot of the means to get the resources that they need. In addition to that, I wanted to share one other statistic that I found very interesting. It was West Broadway violent crime by year. This went from 2007 to 2017. And the numbers were 13 for homicide, 65 for rape, 496 for robberies, and 556 for aggregated This was surprising to me. I don't know if it's surprising for you all, but the way again that North Minneapolis is constantly promoted on TV in the community is as if, as if it is an ultra-violent community, as if there aren't resources there that could be poured into the community when we recognize that they can. When the city of Minneapolis thinks outside the box like it did last summer with the collaborative public safety grants, we can do things differently. But we need resources that are for us and by us. It's not that the community is in need of saving. We just need to provide opportunities and platforms for the people who are already in the community. We have programs and organizations like Cleaning for Change, which activates the community and goes in. And not only do they clean up trash in the community, but they also shovel during these trying times where so many of our citizens were getting towed just because maybe they didn't have the ability physically or they didn't have the resources to be able to move their car in a timely manner. These are things that the city council can act on and can partner with community organizations like Cleaning for Change to change it. In addition, my husband, James Baduel, who also works with us with the Minneapolis NAACP, he's been working on a 90-day pre-release program for the community. When you are in prison, you have a 90-day pre-release program to get ready for the community. But what does the community have to get ready for you? How are we changing the ways that we are thinking about people who have done their time for their crime? And they should be able to come back and be a part of this community. Again, I have hope that if we can think differently, we can do differently. Secondly, I wanted to talk to you all about economic development and how important that is. The city of Minneapolis, the city council, you all have a great opportunity. First, when we think about housing, the city doesn't have to just think on developers who we have historically gone through. The city can also build. You all can focus on social housing, where we put people over property. And it's not just about the bottom line, but it's about what's for the betterment of the city as a whole. We have to recognize that the city does a lot of work with nonprofits. And this is no shade to nonprofits. But the reality of the situation is a lot of the nonprofits we have in our inner city communities have executive directors that don't look like the people that they're representing. In addition to that, we know that that's not going to do anything for wealth outcomes of people of African descent in these communities. We have to start working with more businesses. We have to start giving people an opportunity to be equitable and to get up to where they could be, if only we provided them with the opportunities. A lot of these institutions weren't created to be equitable and they weren't created to actually reach out to the community in equitable way. So I think, again, if we can think differently, we can do differently. In terms of economics, we know that entrepreneurship is key. We need to start pouring into black businesses, businesses of color in general, and give them the same opportunities, if not more, that we give to others. And when I say not more, because again, we're not talking about equality, we're talking about equitable and, and we're talking about equity, right? Also, I wanted to talk to you all about educational opportunities. Again, we're in Minnesota, which has historically been known to be one of the healthiest, wealthiest, most educated places. But the question becomes, for who? When you ask the community time and time again, they say, we need to bring vocational training back into the community. When we look at the black community overall, data from the Department of Human Services has said that African Americans who are born in Minnesota are the least likely to receive a secondary education. There are a number of reasons for this, but at the end of the day, this is our reality. So what happened to these children after they're graduating from high school and they can't find employment because they haven't been learning the required skills that they need to be able to occupy the jobs that currently exist? This is a disservice not only to these children, but to the city as a whole. Again, I challenge us to think different, to do different. We know that historically, black colleges produce great people for our community. If we look right over our neighboring city in St. Paul, the first black mayor, Melvin Carter, went to an HBCU and he came and he brought his talents right back to his hometown. I believe that if the city of Minneapolis poured in to children of African descent and created pipeline programs and resources and opportunities for them to be able to go out and attend historically black colleges, we would be in a better position. Because we know some of us are able to go out, but only those of us who are in a position in society to be able to afford them. Again, we need to think about doing things in an equitable way. So again, I challenge us to think about transforming the way that we think about criminal justice, pouring in more economic development opportunities and also educational opportunities. I have faith that if we work together, that we can pour into not some communities in Minneapolis, but all communities in Minneapolis.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Badu, for that powerful presentation and, and recommendations. I am going to invite Ms. Mar Stevens once again to the podium to, to wrap up regarding the future work to address racial inequities in the city enterprise.
Thank you, Chair Jenkins. So the future work that lies ahead of us is really for us all to determine together. In the last council term, there was an adoption of the Race, the Division of Race and Equity Ordinance, which does provide some clarity around a lot of the points that I raised earlier around how we're beginning to build that deeper infrastructure. I definitely want to lift up the points that Ms. Badu just spoke to really around one of the, and I dropped my pen before I sat down, so I wish I had taken better notes. But what, what really resonated with me from what she said was this idea, was this, this understanding that our community really does have an understanding of what community needs and the ways in which we invite community to the table to work collectively with us is really the pathway towards us being able to create those more equitable outcomes that we want. The ways in which we center our resources in supporting these community-based strategies and really working collectively with them at the onset of policy development, at the onset of looking at our procedures and our practices and really giving them voice and shaping that is that transformative shift that we as an institution need to take. And not to say that that doesn't happen in different pockets of the city, but how we normalize that across the entire body of the work that we do would really be that transformative move from doing what we've perpetually done to doing new and different things and getting new and different results. So for the, for the Division of Race and Equity, our charge is really about implementing the ordinance that council adopted in the last term. It centers on actually developing a racial equity action plan, which was called out in the ordinance, which is something that we as, as a city have talked about in the past, but really centering that work more clearly so that we have that North Star as a city. We're clear about the work that we're doing, we're clear about who's doing it and when it's getting done, and we have that diligence in order to be able to allocate resources to support that. For us, it also means continuing the work that we've been doing with GARA, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity and Minnesota League of Cities, through an implementation cohort that we're in right now with other cities and jurisdictions across the state of Minnesota, including Hennepin County and Ramsey County. We are going to continue to do the work of supporting departments and their team development, supporting those departments who have teams by giving them the tools that they need to be successful, continuing to create collaboration spaces for department teams to come together and to learn from one another and to begin to build their strength. But then also strengthening those opportunities in departments that don't yet have teams to, to, to develop teams. We also want to expand the training and capacity building that we've been doing thus far, including helping departments learn how to use a racial equity analysis tool. I know we have been working with Councilmember Cunningham in some of the work that he's doing around the conduct on premises and helping us to think about how we're using a racial equity analysis tool in that process. That's a sort of normative work that we want to make sure is part of what we do in every single aspect of our city. That moves us from organizing around racial equity to actually building some, some sustainable models for our city going forward. And then lastly, we are very enthusiastic that the council is going to be taking an action today on the Racial Equity Community Advisory Committee. Implementing that new advisory body to the city is really going to create a new way for us to be intentionally accountable to a set of community members that each of you have chosen to represent your ward and to give voice to the work that we're doing around racial equity, to help us work side by side with our city steering committee, as well as with other staff to develop that racial equity action plan and really begin to move from business as usual, as we've done in the city, with some degree of engagement, to really truly making a commitment for community members to have a voice in that And that's it. And then the next thing is previous thing, is the next thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mar Stevens. And are there any questions or comments? I see one from Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some of my colleagues may have more to say on the substance, but I just wanted to lift up one thing, which is how much work has been done with what I would consider such little resource to this work. And I think in, one way to say it is that we relied on staff of color to do more than I think we've really funded through our budgets. And I think a lot of it And I think a lot of it has included emotional labor that has to do with kind of just dealing with all of the different aspects and layers of this work. And I've personally seen a lot of times where your office, Ms. March Stevens, has just sort of gently redirected a conversation or just so gracefully handled all of the complicated work that you're doing. And I just wanted to name that and just thank you all so much for that, too. And going forward, I think we need to rectify that and really, truly, fully fund this work. It was only four years ago, in the first year of our last term, that the council, the mayor proposed and the council authorized the funding for two positions in what has now become the Race Equity Office. And you've been able to expand the team by cobbling together different grant funding sources and being creative. But I just want to state now, today, that as we hear how much has been accomplished in the past few years, again, going forward, as we think about our budgets and how we allocate resources and how we think about this work, that it needs to be fully funded in a true way. And so, thank you so much.
Thank you, Council President Bender. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none. I just want to thank all of our presenters today for this incredible presentation. I want to thank Ms. March Stevens and her staff for all of the work that has been happening. And to echo Council President Bender's comments, that it is indeed the emotional labor that happens when you are not only trying to address these deeply systemic issues that are baked into our system over time, but you are still in the midst of trying to overcome that work, still being deeply impacted on a daily basis by those very oppressions that we are trying to eliminate. So kudos to Ms. March Stevens and your staff for all of the efforts and to all of the city staff who we just heard, this wide breadth of work. I believe that the importance of this gathering today was so that we can get a understanding of all that is happening within the city of Minneapolis. My charge and our charge as Chair of this subcommittee and members of this body is to create space and opportunities to focus that work and energy in a way that moves the style forward in positive and progressive ways. So thanks to all who came and presented, particularly to our guest speakers. I thought you guys were incredibly cogent and spoke directly to the issues that are impacting our city on a daily basis. So thank you so much for being here. With that, I want to now bring forward a motion to accept the, to receive and file these presentations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And that item carries. Our next item, we have one more item on our Race Equity Subcommittee agenda today, and that is the approval of the first 13 appointments to the Race Equity Advisory Committee. And I will ask Ms. March Stevens to give us a very short presentation on this initial slate.
Very short, absolutely. So in the last council term, there was a resolution passed to form the Racial Equity Community Advisory Committee. That process of outreach solicited 27 applications citywide. The goal of this committee is threefold. They are to advise the city council, mayor, and city departments on city policies, practices, budget, and other matters that it determines the appropriate related to addressing racism and racial inequities and promoting racial justice and racial equity in the city enterprise and in the city as a whole. They are to help in the development of a racial equity action plan, in addition to our city steering committee and our policymakers. And lastly, they are to -- I don't have the last point. Yes, I do. So they're supposed to help support the racial equity implementation and do an annual report on the city's progress towards meeting its racial equity goals. So what we have in front of us today is a slate of candidates who have been identified through the application process. They have been selected by their wards and from the mayor's office to be appointed to this inaugural Racial Equity Community Advisory Committee. So the minimum numbers on the committee is 15. We have 13 to introduce today, and we have two vacancies.
Thank you, Ms. March Stevens. Are there any questions? Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Vice President Jenkins. I wanted to just circle back and because I'm excited about this slate, because it is truly this work being institutionalized and it's really coming to life. There are real human beings who are coming into this work. It's no longer just a resolution, but it's actually real work. So I just wanted to name that. Thank you so much for all of your hard work, for the whole team. Thank you. Much as was said, it is, being a city employee of color is really challenging because you are watching systemic oppression in motion and trying to interrupt it and oftentimes under-resourced and undersupervised. And so, it's, I'm so grateful for everything that you all have done because you have really laid out a framework for us to be able to shift fundamentally how we do business here. And so, kudos to y'all. Thank you so much for making it work, and I'm so excited for my appointment to this particular committee because I know he's going to shake things up. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. And with that, I would move approval of these appointments. I'm sorry, Councilmember Gordon, my apologies.
Oh, no, that's all right. I wanted to speak in support of the motion, so I appreciate that you made it. I also wanted to express my appreciation for how this meeting was structured and set up. I think this was, to your credit and the credit of your office, Vice President Jenkins and all the staff who came here and the others, I think this is a really nice pivot point to start this term off and focus this work in. I hope everybody acknowledges that this is the, this subcommittee is made up of the entire city council. So I think we really want to see that this work is guided by all of us and also is embedded into the entire enterprise and to all the departments and all the work that's going on. I was very impressed reading over the applicants. I think there's passion, not only in the city steer group that's running this, but also in the community that's getting involved. These are people who really care about this work and they really want to make a difference in the city enterprise itself, but also in the city in a broader perspective and grapple with these insidious disparities that have been plaguing us and are baked right into our very fabric sometimes. We can't even find the tentacles, they go in so deep. And now we're, I think, focusing in and we're going to figure that out and we're going to untangle this and we're going to hopefully solve it, maybe not only hopefully, but we are, let's say that. And let's raise the bar pretty high for the steering committee and also for the community advisory group. We've got a lot of work to do and we're going to really need your help to do this. I just want to note that I think I've been on the council longer than anybody here at the dais right now, and this was a little piece of work that I picked up and wanted to do something with a long, long time ago. And it's a little bit moving and touching for me right now because it feels like this has a life of its own. It's totally out of my control now and it's just going to, just hopefully, go crazy and really have a big impact. And that is really satisfying for me and I appreciate it. So I'm very excited about today and I'm very excited to support this motion and to see where this goes next.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Madam Chair, can I clarify? Are you including in your motion the additional appointment that is in front of everyone in the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
So, thank you, Ms. Clark, for that, for that information. Before I move on the aforementioned motion, I want to make a motion to confirm the mayoral appointment of Malia Conley to seat 15 of Ward 13 to a two-year term beginning May 1st, 2018, ending April 30th, 2020. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries. And so now we will move to the original motion of the adoption of the entire slate, which includes Ms. Conley. And all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much and congratulations. If any of our, if any of our appointees are here today, can you stand, just please stand and state your name and indicate, so that you can be recognized. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Erica Hemmerman, Ward 7.
Thank you.
I'm Arthur Hemmerman, Ward 7.
All right.
I'm Mayor, Ward 11, Public Affairs, Ray M.
Thank you all so much for your service to the city of Minneapolis, and we look forward to working with you on this really incredibly challenging work. So thank you. With that, the meeting of the Race Equity Subcommittee is adjourned. We will continue with the remaining committee of the whole business before us, which is the receipt of reports from our standing committees on matters to be considered by the full city council at our regular council meeting this coming Friday. And I do want to just note that we will be having a small reception at the end of this meeting, so if people can join us in room 319, I'd be happy to have you there and we can have some conversations and dialogue at that point. So, colleagues, considering that we are running into lunch hour, I will ask you to keep your reports short and to the point as much as possible. And we'll begin with the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee report, which is chaired by Councilmember Goodman, but I think we're going to hear the report from Councilmember Ellison.
I have, Madam Vice President, I have eight items to report, and the most notable two being the $220,000 loan that we'll be giving to the Lopp Foundation for their auxiliary building at 3800 Humboldt Avenue North and the Great Streets 2018 Business District Support Grants that we issued. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Councilmember Ellison. Our next committee report is the Housing and Policy Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. There's just two items we're bringing forward. One is a resolution authorizing submission of our grants to Hennepin County, and the other is passage of our 4D Pilot Initiative Program.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Seeing none. We will hear from Councilmember Cunningham, the Chair of the Public Health, Environment, and Civil Rights and Engagement Committee.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee will be bringing forward eight items for consideration at Friday City Council Meeting. The first is the reappointment of the Civil Rights Director of Velma Corville. Number two is approving council appointments for the Minneapolis Community Environmental Advisory Commission. Three is community solar gardens, increasing the subscription agreement. Four is master contract amendments with Tubman-Pillsbury United Communities, North Point Health and Wellness, and the Family Partnership for Continued Health and Human Services Programming. Number five is an agreement with Hennepin County to engage in local collaborative time study revenue enhancement activities. Six is a grant from HUD for lead remediation and healthy home services. Number seven is a large block event with amplified sound for Ninja Warrior. And number eight is 100% renewable electricity resolution, a summary of discussion and feedback by the Clean Energy Partnership. I am happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. The next committee report is the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee chaired by Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And we have 14 items being brought forward to the full city council on Friday. Most notably is the reappointment of our fire chief. That is it.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Councilmember Kano. Next committee report is Transportation and Public Works Committee report by Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two items. One is the reappointment of our Commissioner of Health, Christian Musique Hans, and that will be referred to the Peace Committee for the setting of a public hearing. And then the second is our Civil Service Commission appointments. There are two reappointments nominated by the mayor.
I believe that was the executive committee report.
I am very happy to present the executive committee report. And Councilmember Fletcher will be doing TPW, which is what you asked for. Surprise!
Thank you. It's speeding it up. We've already had our executive committee report. Thank you so much. And we will hear from then Councilmember Fletcher for the TPW committee report.
Thank you, Vice President Jenkins. The first four items, we're bringing forward 14 items today. The first four are resurfacing projects up for approval and authorizing assessments. Item number five is an amendment to our Regulation of Bike Sharing Ordinance. Item number six is an agreement with MinDOT for landscaping improvements at Hennepin-Lindale. Item number seven is an application to host a Green Corps member. Item number eight is removal and easement agreement with PB Plaza and Orchestra Hall for park use. Items number nine through 14 are all accepting a low bid for projects proposed, and I'll be happy to answer questions about any of those.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Councilmember Fletcher, for that report. And our next committee report, which is by far our longest committee report by Councilmember Warsami.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We have 23 items, and I'll read them on Friday. 23 items to report. I can read every single one of them. But, all right, the first five items are legal settlements, six and seven, eight are contracts. Number nine is acquisition of 2629 University Avenue Northeast for the East Side Storage and Maintenance Facility. Number 10 is a license agreement with the Suleyne Railroad Company for monitoring well at 2651 University Avenue Northeast. Number 11 is a lease at Minneapolis Inbound Lot for the State Highway Patrol Vehicle Storage. Number 12 is a contract amendment with the Minneapolis Downtown Council for Downtown Activation Services. Number 13 is a contract amendment with Goldberg Bonding for leased space in the Jerry Half Memorial Parking Ramp. Number 14 is a contract amendment with Backbone Enterprises, Inc. for Information Technology IT Audit Services. 15 is a contract with Regents of the University of California for the DNA Index Systems Use. Number 16 is the Capital Long Range Improvement Committee Click Appointments. Number 17 is the First Quarter 2018 Donation Report. Number 18 is a contract with Regents of the University of Minnesota for Traffic Management Services at TCF Bank Stadium. Number 19 is a transfer of 2018 funds for the City Coordinator's Office to the Health Department for Green Cost Share Program. Number 20 is a transfer of 2018 funds for the Community Planning and Economic Development to the Health Department. Number 21 is 2018 Local Board of Appeal and Equalization. We had a big presentation on that. Number 22 is a Business Continuity and Disaster Recovery IT Audit. And 23 is a community solar garden, which we had an exciting presentation on as well. And I'll ask staff for questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Councilmember Warsami, for that report. And our next committee report is the Zoning and Planning chaired by Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Zoning and Planning will come forward with two items. The first is rezoning at 2700 University Avenue, and the second is alley vacation. I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Councilmember Schrader, for that report. And with that, that completes our business for this morning. And with no further business before us, this meeting is adjourned. And with no further business before us, this meeting is adjourned.